Good evening and welcome to the candidates debate for the Wakefield School Committee in the upcoming annual town election on Tuesday, April 26. My name is Bill Carroll. I'll be moderating tonight's debate. This year, the candidates were given a choice of appearing in Zoom or appearing on Zoom or in the studio itself. Due to a number of candidates running for the committee, the debate will run for 90 minutes. This year's candidates for the three-year term on the school committee are Eileen Collaren, Kevin Fontanella, Alex McCarrawitz, Tom Markham, Greg Spry, Carmen Sorrentino, and Amy Wall. Amy Wall is unable to join us this evening. We will have a videotape closing that she will provide. And Greg Spry is appearing on Zoom. Posing questions to the candidates tonight are Bob Burgess, editor of the Wakefield Daily Item, and Mark Sardellum, columnist for the Wakefield Daily Item. There'll be no opening statements in this evening's debate. Questions will be asked of candidates by one panelist. That candidate will have two minutes to respond to the question. Following response, each remaining candidate will have one minute to respond to the question. To allow for as many questions as possible, we will be maintaining a strict time method. Okay? So if I cut somebody off, it has nothing to do with their response or anything like that. It's just that we've got to move along and, in fairness, try and keep them all the same. Questions have not been provided to the candidates in advance. Questions must be relevant to the issues important to the town, which I'm sure they will be, and questions of a personal nature will not be allowed. At the end of the debate, each candidate in turn will have the opportunity to present a two-minute closing statement. Strict, as I said, strict compliance with the timeframe. I'll try and keep things rolling along. Mark Sardellum, you want to kick things off with a question to Eileen?
Sure. Two of the main areas of school committee responsibility are budget and policy. Are there specific budget or policy areas that you would want to address as a school committee member?
Yes. Thank you. So yeah, I would like to address some of the policies for sure. Policy is something that I definitely want to be a part of. I would love to be a part of the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee, if I'm elected. I do think that there needs to be some changes and updates for today's world. Just a few things that have come up over the past, you know, year, for example, you know, providing safety in schools for all kids are some of the things that I think are necessary. One of the most troubling things that I found while going through the youth risk assessment form was seeing that 12% of our students have considered suicide, which I think is really troubling. So I think that some policies definitely need to be updated and to ensure safety in our schools and that our kids are feeling protected in our schools. And then, of course, budget, yeah, absolutely. The new high school is something that I'm really interested in and definitely support. And I would definitely work closely with everyone on the school committee and the school administration on how best to provide that.
Okay. Kevin, one minute follow-up.
Okay. Thank you very much for the moderators and my other colleagues here. This is great. So in terms of the budget, it's definitely a huge challenge. Being a teacher for the last 23 years, I've seen, you know, the challenges that districts have had trying to keep educational programs alive with budget constraints. So one thing that I'm going to be very interested, if I am lucky enough to be put on the school committee, is to be looking at curriculum specifically and really making sure that when we look at our policy of curriculum, that for K through 12, that we're going to make sure that we have solid curriculums put in place that are going to help our students achieve what they can achieve. I also think the professional development for teachers is also very important, and I would definitely want to look at the budget and really look at what professional development programs are being put in place to really help our instructional practices.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex?
Yes. Well, when looking at the budget area, I went through and what I was pleasantly surprised to see was there were extra funds or distribution of funds allocated towards the special education department, as well as a lot of focus on the wellness and mental health of our students, especially coming out of this pandemic. I think the district has done an amazing job this year, moving that mission kind of forward and having that initiative at the top. For example, I noticed that the high school and middle school, they have potential intervention lists to be hired to come in. They saw the need and they addressed it. That's definitely one area I look forward to working with if elected, is on the budget. And then with policy, it's staying up with the current times, amending ones that need to be and creating current ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you. Let me also thank WCET and the panelists and my fellow candidates for this opportunity tonight. The biggest priority that I would have for the budget in the next couple of years is to really have a solid look at the reorganization and the reallocation of resources within the special education system of the programs that we have. I think it is time that we do some reorganization and some reallocation of staffing. I know some of that is underway, but I think we need to do that in earnest. I would also say that one of the critical things certainly for FY '23 and even '24, as we begin to walk away from some of the state and federal pandemic resources, the grant funding is drying up, that we need to be ever vigilant to make sure that we are prioritizing and we are making sure that the post-pandemic interventions that are so desperately needed, both academic and social, are available for all students.
Thank you. Carmen?
I also just want to thank the moderators and my colleagues for being here alongside me as well tonight, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I mean, I agree with everything that, you know, my colleagues have said in terms of the high school. I am all for a new school. Who isn't? I mean, you have to be able to compete with surrounding towns, and these surrounding towns are, you know, they're evolving. We need to be able to evolve as well. But the reality is that I think policy and curriculum within the school should always come first before the shiny buildings and the big buildings. I think that, as Alexander said, we need to be prioritizing, especially special education, and also mental health and mental wellness, especially after the pandemic. I didn't know that stat of 12% of students are considering suicide and the fact that we have, you know, school is a place where students should feel comfortable and they should feel, they should feel like they are benefiting from it at the end. We don't want these people coming away from school feeling like they are, they're not.
Thanks. Greg?
Thank you. With regard to policy, I'm not walking in with an agenda. I'm walking in with an open mind. When policies are brought to me, I'm going to consider them. So I want people who are considering me as a candidate to consider my character as a person when it comes to whether or not I should be on this committee. And with regard to budget, I do feel that whereas 80%, roughly speaking, of the budget is salaries, I think with two upcoming contracts in the near future, we have to be fiscally responsible when it comes to looking at the next contracts. And I think when you have someone who comes from the business world as a potential candidate, that's a good person to consider when it comes to that matter.
Thank you. Mr. Burgess to Kevin Fontanella.
Kevin, what would you like to see in a Wakefield education?
Oh, that's a great question. What I would like to see first in a Wakefield education is an educational system that does reach all students and to create an equitable educational system so that all students can achieve in Wakefield public schools from pre-K through 12. Having said that, I've had a lot of conversations with people around town, and one thing that I think about as an educator is we, for good reason, we always talk about, focus on our special education students. And a lot of parents like to focus on the advanced placement students. And one thing that often gets left behind in public educational circles is your average student, your base student that just kind of walks in and goes to a CP history class, CP English class. And I really think that we have to look at what educational system we are giving to our, you know, our basic average student. And I'm not saying at all that we, you know, I'm not saying we should take resources away from special ed or from the top. But I think that if you create a solid base educational system pre-K through 12, and you actually hit our reading proficiencies and our mathematical proficiency scores at the right levels, I think it's going to raise all boats. I really do. And so for a perfect Wakefield educational system, five years down the road, 10 years down the road, I really am going to be looking at curriculum, instruction, making sure that our dedicated staff have the resources that are going to be necessary to achieve that vision and make sure that every single student is going to be focused on. Okay? And I know it's easier said than done. You know, I'm not, you know, pie in the sky kind of person, but I really do think that, you know, if I'm lucky enough to get elected on the school committee, I'll be able to work with building administration and curriculum policy to make sure that comes into fruition. Thank you.
Alex, one minute.
I'd like to see a holistic education. We need to individualize the students we're teaching to. Not everybody's the same. I personally, I'm a see it, cite it, read it, write it kind of person. I have more of the English history side of the brain versus science and math and STEM. But I was the average student that Kevin was speaking of, and I needed maybe more instruction on the STEM side, but not so much as the other. I have a lot of social skills and did a lot of extracurricular activities. Some students don't have that, or that's just not their thing. So being able to teach to the whole person, and I understand individualizing for every student is like a unicorn, a dream that we would all love to see, but having more intention to do that. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Tom, by the way, you have 10 seconds after I signal. For those at home, I'm signaling at 10 seconds to go, so I just want you to know that. You don't have to drop it right off. Tom Markham.
Thank you. What I would vision for the Wakefield Public School education in the next five to 10 years would be a continuation of the types of quality teaching and learning that our outstanding educators have been providing for a number of years now. I think we as a community need to provide, continue to provide better and better resources to be able to empower and enable the teachers to perform their task better and more inclusively. Certainly overall, I think we need to provide an environment where students feel safe and welcome and feel included. I think we want to provide students with an opportunity to get a good chance of being a good citizen, a good employee, a good employer perhaps, and a good parent. At the end of the day, I think we want to provide a school system that allows students with a capacity to learn how to learn, not rote memorization, but a capacity toward investigation and research and inquiry.
Thank you. Carmen, one minute.
Yeah, and to reiterate what they've all been saying, again, I agree. We need a flexible, we need an adaptable educational system to the point where every single student is being able to learn individually. Some students require to, they require it to be written on the whiteboard, and that's how they learn. Some students require to, you know, be lectured to and write it down on their own, whatever it may be. We need to, and obviously, like Kevin said, it's a pie in the sky sort of concept. We're never, we're always chasing perfection. It's going to be very difficult to get there, but we have to work toward that. And part of working toward that is developing our teachers as well, because at the end of the day, our teachers are the ones who are relating to our students. They are the ones who are, you know, relaying this information to our students. We need to make sure these teachers are prepared to create inclusive classrooms and help every student benefit from the Wakefield Public School System.
Thank you. Greg?
I think it's important to teach people how to think, not what to think, you know? So I want to see a focus put on developing thought rather than dictating what needs to be sput back out. I think it's important to make people critical thinkers and employable. I think it's important to focus on what, you know, what I was raised with, reading, writing, and arithmetic, you know, getting back to the core focus of education. Thank you.
Mark? Oh, Eileen. Oh, Eileen, I'm sorry. See, that's because we started.
No, that's okay. Don't worry.
All right. Thank you, boys. All right, Eileen, you're up. Sorry. Yeah. That method worked, huh?
Don't worry about it. Can I start?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great. Fantastic. Well, first of all, I think that we have phenomenal teachers in our school. And so I think that, you know, providing teachers the resources and education and continuing education will just help push us forward. I want to meet, I would love our schools to be able to meet kids at where they are at, at their learning journey. And I would like them, us, to be able to identify, or not, I say us as a teacher, I'm sorry. The teachers to be able to identify the needs and learning support of students and acceleration, learning acceleration as well, like you were saying as well. And I'm going to use the term lifelong learners, but that is something that was always ingrained in my head, is teaching kids to be lifelong learners.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, Mark for Alex.
In light of the recent issue over Good Friday, how do you think religious holidays on the school calendar should be handled?
Oh, that is a great question, because I actually have been talking about it a lot. So for me, it was more of like the last minute, ah, now what do I do with my kids, which I think we all kind of were feeling. Thank God for the Boys and Girls Club and Wakefield Academy. But we personally, our family, we are Greek Orthodox. So Friday was not our Good Friday. Our Good Friday is actually this upcoming Friday, the 22nd, and our Easter is the 24th. I think that looking forward at the school calendar and at contracts, it needs to be set out and done. There needs to be a clear plan. We either have the Good Friday off, or if, you know, a teacher can put in for it and it's not counted against them, they don't need to use a sick day, a personal day, and then any student that observes the holiday, the parents can call them out and it doesn't count as an absent, it's excused. I think the same should go for all religions, because we're not all the same. And like I said, my family's the perfect example of that. We're not the common religion in town. So I think being clear, knowing it upfront, and consistency, and it's across the board for everybody is kind of the way to go when looking at the religious holidays.
Thank you. Tom, one minute, Tom.
Thank you. So I believe that the public school calendar should not recognize any religious holidays. I think that we as a public school system need to be mindful and respectful of the fact that we live in a diverse community. We have many diverse people of faith, and we should provide opportunities for both staff and students to fully participate in their faith. And I'm not, I don't believe that we would be in school through July if we began to recognize and have days off for every religious holiday, which is why frankly, a couple of years ago, we began in earnest a conversation with the Teachers Association as well as other folks in town about the elimination of Good Friday as a day off. I think we probably collectively need to handle better how it went this year, and I think the calendar in general needs to be, needs to have much more thought put into the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carmen?
I am, as a Christian, obviously, a little upset about, you know, Good Friday not being a day off from school in Wakefield. But that being said, I think, again, we need transparency with these holidays as well. And I think that, you know, I wouldn't just be, I'm not just upset as someone who's a Christian and Good Friday isn't taken off. I have Muslim friends. I have friends who have been, you know, who are Buddhists and stuff like that. I think we should recognize these days, and I think if it does lead us into later months into the summer, I think then we have to look at being more productive during the days when we are at school. I think the reality is that we're all religiously diverse. We're diverse as human beings, and we should, no matter the religion, no matter the beliefs, we should honor those days. And I think that's part of the learning process as students as well, understanding why, you know, giving these students a chance to understand why we're taking these days off.
Thank you. Greg?
I think Good Friday should be a day off from school. I think that ultimately, we are, while we are a diverse community, we're still overwhelmingly Christian. So therefore, it would be about 80% of people we're talking about that do celebrate that particular holiday. And for those who don't, they can certainly celebrate their own religious beliefs on a day off, given that it's a day off if the way I propose it to be a day off turns out to be. Ultimately, I think that this country's gotten away from God, and that's why we're dealing with so many of the other issues that we're dealing with.
Thank you. Eileen?
So the purpose of public school is to encompass all people, all school, all religions, all ethnicities. And, you know, so I agree with the school committee's decision to go back, I believe it was decided about three years ago, to get rid of Good Friday being a day off. So I understand that and I agree with it. However, I think this year was, and I use this terminology before, a little bit of a perfect storm. There was a couple of different religious holidays that were falling on this day, and I think it maybe, perhaps should have been looked at a little bit closer, closely, because it was also the Friday before April vacation. So I agree that definitely the calendar needs to be looked at a little bit better because it did leave parents a little bit in the lurch. But as for religious holidays being off, I mean, just like Tom said, if you have every religious holiday off, we're going to be in school year round. So that's.
Thank you. Kevin?
Um, yeah. I think that if a student and/or his or her family, you know, is observing a religious holiday, I do not think that a public school should at all not allow that student to observe that day. So I think that, you know, in terms of an excused absence for a student, I definitely think that, you know, if they're Christian, if they're Jewish, if they're Muslim, if they're, you know, what, Eastern Orthodox, I do think that they should absolutely be allowed, no questions asked, to have an excused absence. I do agree with Tom that there, because we have such a diversity of faiths, you know, even though Christianity is definitely the predominant religion probably in Wakefield, it's because we can't really discriminate against faiths, we would end up having a lot of religious holidays. And so I definitely understand, you know, the issue with going late into, later into the school year. So I would just, I think my policy, if I was on the school committee, would be to not observe religious holidays, make it at least equal across the board.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Bob, I think you're up for Tommy Markham, correct?
Okay. Tom, what areas of a public school education does the town get right?
Tom, you have two minutes.
Wow, that's a terrific question, Bob. Thanks. I think the town, first of all, I think the use of the word "town" is a great part of the question, because I believe it's the townspeople, the taxpayers, the parents, the homeowners, are the ones that provide the resources through the appropriation of funds that allow educators and administrators and paraprofessionals and others to do their good work. So I think the big thing about the town getting it right is their ability to quality support the schools on a financial basis each year. With regard to the outstanding staff that we have, I think we're on a path of continuous improvement. I think every year gets a little better. I think that we have certainly seen that in the last number of years. We've seen everything. Now, notwithstanding COVID, right? COVID is a big blip in the middle of everyone's world. But in the pre-COVID times and even in the past year, we have seen, you know, really increases in college attendance. We've seen increases in MCAS scores across the district. Certainly, there's areas of work to do, but I think we've got some really, really quality teaching opportunities, excuse me, teachers providing some outstanding learning opportunities. I think our priority for performing arts and music education is outstanding. I think the type of work that we allow students to have for extracurricular activities and athletics, and really a diversity of the types of things that really every kid in the school should be able to find something that inspires their love of learning, whether they're a music kid or a sports kid or a club kid or a chess team kid like I was. You really, you really have to, we have, we provide all of these opportunities. I think that we really do it well.
Thank you. Carmen, one minute.
I mean, Tom hit it on the nail. I think that's the, you know, most important characteristic of a public school is the fact that it has a little bit to offer for everyone, unlike a private school where it's a little bit more tailored. You know, there should be kids coming to every single school in Wakefield and feeling comfortable to, in their extracurriculars with sports, with their teachers, with, as a theater kid, as a music kid. You know, the reality is, as a public school, diversity has to be, diversity within the teaching staff, within the administration, within the students, needs to be focused on and needs to be, I mean, focus of all of us on the school committee because that's what makes a public school a public school.
Thank you. Greg, one minute.
May I have the question repeated? I could not hear it when it was initially asked.
Sure. What areas of a public school education does the town do well? Does the town get right?
The town has thus far produced some great education in this home with these four children. I would have to say that I've been pleased with what I've seen from the Galvin, from the Dahlberg, from what Doug Lyons has put forth when he brings out his curriculum. And I've been quite pleased with how our children have excelled in the program and especially some of the extras that the program has, such as, but not limited to, the performing arts.
Thank you. Eileen?
I think one thing that our Wakefield Public Schools has gotten right is our teachers. I think they're phenomenal. I've been through five years at Dahlberg so far, and I haven't had a bad experience. I mean, they're phenomenal. They're supportive. They care about our students, and I've met with several teachers from the Galvin and from the high school. And again, phenomenal people. They care about our kids. The education I think that they're getting is great. There's rigor in the classroom. They're asking tough questions. I just think that's the one, one of the few, one of the many things that they have gotten right, so.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, I'm a high school history teacher, and when COVID hit, my kids were in kindergarten and first grade, and my kids learned how to read. And the bottom line is, that's pretty, that's pretty impressive. I am really impressed with the elementary education my kids have received so far. I hate to leave. I know I'm going to offend, you know, some teachers if I single some out. I, what Carmen said and what Greg said about the extracurricular activities, I mean, you know, I've coached, I've worked with theater at my own high school, and the music and theater program here seems top-notch. You know, I always read in the item about the track program and how, you know, phenomenal it's doing. And just from my own high school experience, like, a lot of times you need that one thing. You need that one experience, sometimes outside of school, and boom, that, you know, is the thing that will, you know, bring everything else together. So, and from what I've seen so far, my kids are young, it's been great.
Thank you. Alex?
One thing that I believe our town and our district does right is they care. They care about our students. They care about our staff, the families, building a sense of community, not just within the districts and the schools, but between the district and the town. And that's clear, especially when you look at, you know, the Warrior logo or masking. There's two sides, and both sides to all of these are so passionate, and it's because they care. And that's really, I think, the strongest thing we have going for us as a community and a district.
Thank you. Next is Mark to Carmen.
As kind of a logical follow-up to the last question, what areas do you think need improvement in Wakefield Public Schools?
improvement in Wakefield Public Schools?
I'm a Wakefield Warrior for life, so I don't like to criticize too much, but, you know, from my personal high school experience as a, and just an entire experience, as part of the Wakefield Public School system for 12 years, I would say, we touched on this a little bit earlier, just being more driven, being more individually driven, understanding that it being a public school, we have a lot of different personalities. We have a lot of different people with, you know, different skill sets. They learn in different ways, you know, they prefer certain ways of learning that other students don't. They have certain faiths, certain values, and it's understanding that within a public school compared to a private school, you're going to have to be dealing with that diversity. And so, from a curriculum standpoint, from an environment standpoint, I would like to see teachers, administration be a little bit more wary of that reality within our public schools. Thank you.
Greg, one minute?
Taking parental input, not only taking it, but maybe even reaching out and soliciting it. Because frankly, when the parents have brought it to their attention, it's been met with a whole lot of resistance, we'll call it. So ultimately, I think that the school committee and the school system could take parental input and then use that to incorporate and shape the children's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen, one minute?
Sure. I think one of the things that needs to definitely improve is intervention in the earlier grades to ensure that special needs are being met, so that we don't have as many out placements. A large portion of our special ed budget is from out placements, and that, a lot of the times, that's due to not getting intervention at an earlier age. So ensuring that parents have the resources and teachers are keeping in close contact and administration with parents regarding special needs, and IEPs are being met, 504s, all of that, and making sure that, you know, we reduce the amount of out placements, which will also help our budget.
Thank you. Kevin, one minute?
So for the past school year, Wakefield has been focused, rightly so, on social, emotional. You know, definitely, the school closures and, you know, the pandemic definitely caused a lot of mental health issues that I think Wakefield did a great job addressing. I think one thing that we have, we have to look to work on is, I think we have to push a little bit more academic rigor. I firmly believe that if you set expectations higher, that students will respond. And I think that, you know, we really, as we move into the future, we really have to look at setting high expectations for our students and really, really acknowledge that I think there's really very few limits in terms of how good our educational system can be. And I really think if we raise expectations and we set solid structures for kids to succeed, I really think that we can really, you know, the sky's the limit in terms of how far we can go.
Thank you. Alex, one minute?
Family engagement. I think we all know that a student will succeed better academically if they're taking what they learned in the classroom and bringing it home. My mom always used to say, you know, homework is just practice. If you can't get it, that's okay, you go in the next day, you tell your teacher, and you'll get some extra assistance in it. I don't like the term, you know, helicopter parent. I prefer to call myself enthusiastic, but I'm involved, like actively, in my children's education. And I think that if we can bridge that gap for all families, our students are going to excel way beyond our expectations.
Thank you. Tom, one minute?
Thank you. I think first and foremost, the thing we need to do is we need to continually get better at inclusion. I think we need to continually get better at making sure that students feel welcome and have the opportunity to learn and to grow. We need to make sure that we provide better environments for kids to feel they have a trusted adult outside of a parent in their life. Often, kids come to school in the most difficult of days, difficult of times, and we become, the school system becomes their most solid part of their day. And we need to make sure that those kids are taken care of and supported, just like all other students are. I think we need to make sure that we, in the coming, both this year and going into next year, I mean, make sure, we need to settle the teacher and other contracts, make sure the salaries are competitive, so we can recruit, train, and retain students. We need to improve our facilities, we need a new high school, we need to keep our technology turning over to keep it current, both for students' use in the classroom and for use at home.
Carmen, did you kick that off?
I did.
Okay. All right. Keep him tracked. So, Mark to Eileen? Oh, it's Bob to Eileen. Sorry. Greg? Wow, I really wrote that down the wrong way. Bob to Greg, which I have written down here. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. I wrote it down, too. Go ahead, Bob to Greg, sorry.
Does the town need a new high school?
Two minutes.
I guess that was to you, Greg.
Greg?
Does the town need a new high school?
Does the town need a new high school is the question?
Yes.
Okay. The answer is yes, it does. Yes, it does, and I would be, you know, I'm ecstatic at the prospect of working hand-in-hand with the administration in order to get there. I've been following along ever since we moved to town, I mean, you know, and now that there's, we're already into phase four, I believe, the progression is, we're getting there. And I'm looking forward to working with my fellow school committee members to make sure that that gets done responsibly. But ultimately, it's a town-wide decision, and we know we need people to fund it. So I hope that whether you are just in town without children, parents of current children, or, you know, like I've met so many people on the campaign trail, and they've said, "Well, I've already raised my kids, so I'm not that interested in the school committee." Well, there are things that, you know, you as a town member still need to be invested in when it comes to the topic of the schools, and I think a new high school is one of them. In fact, one person said to me, you know, "I'm very excited about the prospect of the new high school, because it's going to do great things for my property value." So everybody in town is aware of this, everybody has their interest in it, but ultimately, the interest should be for the children. And that's what we're all focused on, and moving this along, continuing the momentum that we have, and ultimately deciding and funding a new high school is what this town needs to do.
I think we can all agree that this is sort of one of the overriding issues in this election. So I'm going to give everybody two minutes, if you want to take it, okay, for this question? Okay? All right. Eileen, your next two minutes.
Well, now that I have two minutes, no. So, yeah, I love, yes, we need a new high school. As much as I love walking through the halls of Wakefield High School and reminiscing of my high school days, I graduated 20 years ago, and nothing, I don't think, you know, building-wise has changed much, which is, you know, that definitely needs to change. We took, we raised the bar when we built Galvin. And Galvin is beautiful, and we have beautiful elementary schools that are updated as well, not all of them, but most of them. And so our kids are going from these elementary schools with all this technology, and then they're going to the Galvin, and it's fantastic, and then they're coming to the high school. And so I think we need to keep that level there. I mean, need to create a 21st century facility for them. And just like Greg said, it's not just an education investment, it's an economic investment. So property values are going to go up, workforce is going to go up, you know, there's going to be a lot of economic opportunities, so it's not just for education, you know, it would benefit the entire town. So, yes, I am definitely in favor of the high school.
Kevin, two minutes?
Okay, so, I worked at a high school that was built in 1953, and we just tore it down, and this is really our first year with students inside the building at Saugus. So I'll give the easy answer, yes, we do need a new high school, because, I mean, the science classrooms that we have now are, they're like a college classroom. They can do labs that you can probably do at UMass Amherst or any, you know, state college around. They're, it's that impressive. The performing arts center is amazing. I mean, you could probably have, you know, bands come in there and perform. It's, it really is amazing. There's open education spaces where you can actually do different types of instruction that you can't do in a traditional, a traditional high school. And so I echo what, you know, Greg and Eileen have said, and what probably everyone's going to say, you know. But, you know, the hard part is, you know, the cost. I mean, we can't ignore the fact that this is going to be an expensive project. And I think that the school committee's responsibility is definitely going to be to educate the public about this, and we, and it has to be, like, definitely front and center, because, you know, and you guys have been through the process with the Galvin, so you know exactly what the process is. And we just have to make sure that, in order, to make sure that we can marshal enough public support, you know, maybe from parents or people that do not have kids in the school system right now. That is something that definitely has to get done, to make sure that the plan goes into fruition. So, yes, on the high school, and, yeah, we gotta get out there and, you know, educate the public.
Alex, two minutes?
All righty. So, yes, we all can agree, obviously, we need a new high school. We need to be competitive with other communities around us, and we all feel like our children deserve the best of the best. So, yes, for the new high school, but then looking realistically, so we have it, like we have the new Galvin, then what? We need to plan further than that. How are we going to maintain these new buildings that we are putting up for our students, for our children to learn for their future? I actually learned through my campaign that the district used to have a maintenance portion of our budget, but then, years ago, it had kicked back to the town. I think looking into that, potentially bringing that back into the district's budget to maintain the buildings that we are putting up, and, like Eileen had mentioned, some of the elementary schools that have had renovations and things, to maintain that. One of the biggest questions I was asked while I was collecting signatures was if I was in favor of the new high school or not. And then the follow-up was, how can we justify building a new high school when we can't maintain the buildings we currently have? And that is what I think should be in the back of all of our minds as we do move forward with the new high school. So, yes, for it, but let's think even more into the future of how to keep it up to date.
Tom, two minutes?
Thank you. First, let me just quickly respond to Alex and say that I think we do a very fine job at maintaining the buildings that we have. We have a really strong maintenance staff that does work for the schools, and I think we've developed in the course of recent years some real quality working relationship with the town. These are, they are public buildings owned by the town, and I think we have continued to put more resources toward building maintenance. There were many years where we struggled with that, but I think we're doing well these days. I think the big picture question, excuse me, the big picture answer to this question is we, the school committee, in regard to a new high school, well, first of all, I suppose I should answer the question, yes, I'm wholeheartedly supportive of a new high school. In fact, I sit on the Wakefield High School, on the building committee, as the school committee's one of two representatives. Dr. Piscatello and I are on the committee. We, the school committee, are a two-pronged. We are an employer, and we are educators. I think one of the most important things also about the building is we need to, we need to recognize that the shape that it's in, its age, and its really deplorable parts, we are not providing a quality enough environment for our teachers and our staff. It is a workplace for them. They come every day, and they need to be involved and need to be able to have a safe, comfortable, quality work environment. I think that obviously then leads itself to the type of workplace that we're providing them, means that we're also providing a quality environment for students in which they can learn, in a diverse set of environments. Kids walk around this building, parts of the building, they're wearing t-shirts, the other part of their building, they're wearing, you know, pocket jackets. There's lots of things, of work that needs to be done. I think also the New England Association of Schools and Colleges putting us on probationary status, certainly is something that we need to react to. And I think we are. We are almost two years into this project, and there's a long road ahead, but I think we're almost there.
Thank you. Carmen?
Again, the answer is yes. I mean, you know, usually to the ones who oppose it, and even my own parents are wary of it, just because the reality is that if you don't have kids, you know, in the school system where you're not going to have them, or they've already been through, it's tough to be able to want to be in on that economic cost that it brings. But I think what we need to realize as a town is that it's bringing just as many economic benefits, and let's look to our students and our staff, our teachers and our administration as well, the benefits that they're going to reap from it. Tom was just mentioning about the facilities, you know, their classrooms, their offices. It's just going to be a better space, a better environment for teaching and for learning. And that's the reality. I don't think, you know, at the end of the day, reality has to set in at some point. We have to evolve, we have to adapt, we have to keep up with surrounding towns, and we need to be able to provide our students of the present and of the future with the best possible resources to not just be great students, but to be great people in our community and in our societies and across the world.
Thank you. All right. Next is Mark to Eileen?
Okay. A majority of the Wakefield voters said they wanted to keep the old Warrior logo. How do you think the school committee handled that issue?
Two minutes. Go ahead.
Sure. I think they handled it well. I think they handled it to the best of their ability. I don't think this was a function of the school committee that they were prepared, that they had to deal with. Logos are not usually something that the school committee would really have a say in. But remember that it first came to the school committee by the Student Advisory Council. I believe that's the council that they're called. Student, student, what, I think that's what it is. The Youth Council! So, the Youth Council came to the school committee that they wanted the logo changed. And while, yes, we are, you know, Carmen said, "I'm a Warrior forever, I'm a Wakefield Warrior, I graduated in 2002." I get it, but this school belongs to them, and they are the current students at the school. Furthermore, the Wakefield logo, the previous logo, was offensive. There were many Native American panelists who said that it was offensive, and if it offends one kid, then get rid of it. I'm going to quote my nine-year-old, "If it hurts one person, we need to get rid of it." And my nine-year-old said that. So if a nine-year-old can understand that, I think most people can understand that.
Thank you. Kevin, one minute?
Yeah, I mean, the school, the school committee is in charge of policy, and it was definitely under the purview of the school committee to decide whether or not to keep the logo or to change the logo. In terms of transparency, I was pretty well-educated last year, and I think it was very transparent, all the process with the Youth Council and everything that took place. I know that there was a lot of controversy over the logo issue. One thing I would say is, I did watch the forum where you had the Native American tribal leaders, I did watch that, and I really think, one thing that came across to me from that conversation and from the presentations, was that a lot of them were really interested in how we instruct our students and actually teach them accurate history of the relation of Native American history within the state of Massachusetts. And I really think that, you know, that is something that was very important to them and something that I would like to push forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Alex, one minute?
I think the school committee did the best that they could with what they had. It was something that clearly divided this town and still keeps a lot of us on separate sides of the fence. You know, they went through the right motions, like Kevin had said, policy is one of the three areas that fall into the realm of a school committee, and they did what they had to do. They listened to the students, they talked among themselves. As much as a lot of us feel our voices weren't heard, if we wanted to keep the logo, at the end of the day, they did hear us. They just chose to vote a different way. So I think they did the best, like I said, with what was in front of them.
Thank you. Tom, one minute?
I haven't had to answer this question in quite a while, Mark, so thanks for, thanks for asking it. No, in all seriousness, because it's a very important, it's a very important issue, and I do appreciate the question. I think as a matter, the town... Um, I think as a matter, uh, the the town's vote was after the school committee had already voted just as a matter of of procedure, so the school committee had to go back and revisit its own work, which which didn't happen. But part of what did happen is the school committee passed a twelve-point resolution that had to do with many things with regarding the Native American community, not just the logo itself. And one of the one of the many things that came out of the the positive, in some, and I would agree, a very, very difficult exchange. A very difficult uh uh sides were drawn, lines were drawn, um, and uh some some controversy there. I think what what did come out, what was was a much more extensive look at uh how Native Americans uh would like themselves to be viewed by our by the community. And I think about how we as educators and we as uh town officials should be should be sharing uh the types of views that Native Americans have of themselves and of the community at large. One thing that I do want to say is in the in the time since the first logo was originally drawn, Wakefield Public Schools have had four logo, four different um iterations of the logo. Each time was changed by students, and this is the first time that there was controversy around it.
Thank you.
Students wanted it to change, and it should have been driven that way.
Carmen.
Yeah, just to reiterate what everyone's been saying, I thought the school committee did the best they could do with the situation they were given. Obviously, it's a very um it's a very passionate topic, and um we have people standing on both sides of the fence. Me personally, I don't believe that um removing the logo is going to solve the issues that people are looking to be solved. Um, listen, absolutely, we need to listen to the to the um to the Native American tribes, these people, we need to be able to understand where they're coming from. If they if if they personally were not in fear of the logo, we we should certainly grant that request if it's an overwhelming majority who believe that. But the reality is this, like Kevin said, I think it starts in the classroom as well. It's celebrating their history. It's educating our students on their history. Just as we do with, just as we're trying to do with black history, trying to teach our students, you know, the facts and the history of these people, I just don't see um, you know, fighting over a logo, I don't see how that gets us anywhere as a community.
Greg.
You know, you get to be on the school committee by a majority of votes, and then a majority of votes tells you to do something with the logo, and you say, we know better. I just, I don't see how that equates. So ultimately, uh, I think they did a poor job. I think they need to get a real hand on the pulse of the community, and the majority of the community wanted that uh to be retained. And there was, you know, for everyone who was hurt one way, there were other people who hurt another. There was a young lady named Starcatcher the night of the that they rammed through the vote. Uh, and she was saying that it it equates to another form of genocide by taking away that. Uh, basically saying that you're trying to strip us away from society and 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 to make it disappear. So, um, you know, you can make the argument, oh, you hurt one person this way, well, you can hurt the other person that way. At the end of the day, I think it's a matter of character, and it was a red flag on the character of the committee, and they furthered that point later with the masks.
Okay, thank you. Um, Bob to Kevin, two minutes, Kevin.
Kevin, in your opinion, and I'm not just talking about the Wakefield public school system, but has political ideology become too embedded in the curriculum?
That's a great question. So, I've been teaching history for twenty-three years, and I will not lie, in the last five years uh there have been, uh, there has been a little bit of an edge sometimes within the classroom based on events that are happening. Um, you know, outside, not, you know, outside, you know, Saguas, Massachusetts, it's, you know, it's a lot of national, a lot of national polarization. Um, so, um, I cannot lie, it has impacted uh the environment. But having said that, when you when you're a teacher, um, and you're setting up a classroom, and you want to set up an um critical thinking, and you want to, like, I think Greg might have said before, that we don't want to just teach, you know, memorization, we want to actually teach students how to debate, how to um look at these different points of view, and actually how to make cohesive arguments, you know, to be lifelong learners. Um, you know, when I set up my history classroom, um, twenty-three years ago, there were controversial topics. There's been, there were controversial issues a hundred years ago. There's controversial issues now, um, as long as we, uh, as long as, you know, our dedicated teachers um, you know, set up a classroom environment that allows students to take these ideas and to debate these ideas and have the facts, um, the facts put put, you know, put there for them, and then to have one viewpoint, another viewpoint, and both of them to be um given equal weight by the teacher. Um, I think that all of these issues around us, you know, are gonna have a negative effect. In the end, it's a job of our educators, and I and I firmly believe our staff in Wakefield um is completely qualified to do this, and I think they are doing it. I haven't heard any anything to the contrary. Um, I believe that as long as um you're you're presenting the evidence and that you and that you're not, and teachers aren't preaching, but they're actually showing both sides. Um, I think that, you know, the polarization can really be overcome, and in the end, if you do that, I think it actually will help defeat the polarization uh by allowing people to have good faith arguments. Um, and that is, you know, and that's a job.
Thank you. Alex, one minute.
Simple answer, yes. Um, and I think anybody can see that. You could move to another state and just walk into a school committee meeting there or speak with parents in the community, speak with the, you know, the middle school, high school students, and without even asking them that question, you're gonna get the answer, yes. Um, I think a lot of it starts way higher up than people actually realize. Um, it's not really starting at the district level, it's not starting with our teachers. Um, our teachers and staff are doing their job, like Kevin had said, they're doing what is being put in front of them to teach what curriculum's to follow, and then it's up to the staff member of like how they really, you know, get that point across or that message to the students. But it starts a lot higher up um than the district level, and I I think because it comes higher up, that's why it is more in our schools than I think it ever has, at least for me and my age and what I've seen.
Thank you. Tom, one minute.
Thank you. Um, the concern I have isn't so much about ideology as it is, you know, politics. And I think that that politics is embedding itself too much um in our society, drawing too many, too many lines. Um, we need to be much more at the fifty-yard line and talk about things that make us together as a community of educators and a community of learners than the things that separate us. I also think um that the ancient Greeks uh that they got it right. They got it right, the things that they taught us uh very early on. Uh, and education is about inquiry, and education is about appreciating and understanding even things that we may not agree with, but things that we can still learn. Uh, we can understand things that we don't agree with, but we can certainly uh be respectful and mindful in that. I think in education needs to, we need to trust our educators, and we did, we need to trust the the individuals that we place in the in the frontline, our teachers and our paraprofessionals and our administrators. Critical thinking demands an appreciation that students understand the the world around them.
Thank you. Carmen, one minute.
Yeah, the short answer is yes. I mean, I think politics have definitely been embedded in not just, you know, our classrooms here in Wakefield, but I've seen it in college, I've seen it, you know, I've heard it from people, you know, throughout this country, in high schools and in colleges. But the reality is this, um, obviously, I don't want politics to be too embedded into our schools, but just going back to what Kevin and what Greg said earlier, that we want to create an environment where teachers are not teaching what to think, rather, they're helping these students on how to think. And that's exactly what we can achieve by having civil debates, civil communications between, you know, someone who believes in one thing or someone who believes in another. We're never going to be able to get closer to that fifty-yard line if we don't have these conversations. So it really comes down, it boils down to the teachers and the administrators being able to create a classroom and an environment where the facts, the evidence are presented, and um we have students respectfully understanding where where others are coming from while also stating their stating their opinions and beliefs.
Thank you. Greg.
Thank you. Yes, I believe it's been more embedded in uh the curriculum, but that happens at such a high level, as someone referenced earlier. But that's not something that's gonna be uh that would be immediately on our watch as the school committee. I feel like that's more on our watch as parents and as voters. Uh, when you start to vote, you know, when when people start to give you their ideologies and how it relates to education, you need to say, okay, this is who I'm aligned with, and is it gonna be someone who wants to tell you what to think, or is it gonna be someone who just wants to shake thinking? And ultimately, I think that's what it needs to be about. We need to be more focused on um educating young critical thinkers, and you know, I think also another important thing to not get lost on is the fact that teachers are the last line of defense, and they're the ones that are gonna ultimately uh disseminate the information to the children, and I trust, based on the teachers I know in Wakefield, that that's gonna be a healthy dissemination of information.
Thank you. Eileen.
Um, I trust our teachers um and how the curriculum is taught in schools. I was a history teacher for eight years. I I like think of myself as a historian. When you are uh going to college and you're learning about how to be, how to teach history, um, you know, we learn to teach it objectively, um, and not subjectively. And so we tell the facts, we let them think for themselves. One of my favorite things to to do was to sit, to go over something and say, what did you think about that? How do you feel? How would you feel if that was you? And the kids decide for themselves. I loved that. That was one of my favorite things about teaching. Um, I always had a quote on the board, I believe it's Voltaire, I will may not agree with what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it. We always had an understanding in the classroom that we would respect um the opinions of others, and I think Wakefield does a really great job of that.
Okay. Um, now we have Mark's question to Alex.
Um, absent a state a state mandate, are there any circumstances under which you would support a new mask mandate for Wakefield Public Schools?
You had to pick me for that question, as one of the people who stood up um for the mask policy to end and become parental choice. Um, so, the long, short answer is yes. I have children on both sides of the masking debate. I have three kids that are all on IEPs for various disabilities. Two of them is more for articulation, or my oldest is autistic, so being able to see faces and expression is very beneficial um for him. My youngest, on the other hand, was born with a lot of health complications, and he actually has compromised lungs. So, wearing a mask for him causes more damage than good. So, as much as our community wants to think that I was just crusading to end it, to end it, that isn't necessarily the case. Um, I understand both sides of that argument. I knew the families that just wanted it to end and the families who were scared because they had children either going to school that had health complications or another child or family member at home um who were susceptible to it. That, at the end of the day, I'm not going to one-hundred percent jump in and agree to a new mask policy unless it is kind of the end-all, be-all, last resort. Um, I will stick with my conviction of I believe it should be parental choice, unless, you know, heaven forbid, knock on wood, um, the numbers spike again in COVID, we're talking, you know, state shutdowns, things like that. Um, then my mind frame and my position would obviously shift a little bit more, but it would take that kind of situation for me to believe that. I think parental choice right now is um the way to go.
Okay. Tom, one minute.
Thank you. Um, I agree with Alex and probably just about everything that you said. Uh, we had a very difficult time in the last couple of years making making these types of of choices. We used the best, uh, I believe, the best uh science, the best medical and best public health advice that we had um that was available at the time, was not, they weren't easy decisions, there were people on both sides, majorities and minorities. Um, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, um, the school committee is responsible for making a decision that takes care of, does its best in an abundance of caution to take care of all students and all staff. So, absent, your question, absent a state mandate? Um, uh, no, I I cannot think of a a a time where I would support a reinstitution of of universal masking. Certainly, if there's something that the local, you know, our our Board of Health determines, or there's some catastrophe in one of our buildings or an environmental uh health concern, uh, I could, I could certainly accept something like that, but I would probably see us evacuating the building before we would have people in it requiring masks.
Thank you. Carmen.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with Alex and Tom. Um, again, I'm all for parental choice. Again, it's, you know, if it's if it's not for the parents, if it's not for the students, then there is no school committee, there is no schools, and we we need to be able to respect their personal freedoms. And at the end of the day, we're always gonna have people on on both sides of the fences, but I just feel like from what I've heard from students particularly, there's been more harm than good come out of these mask mandates. Now, obviously, if there was a statewide mandate, you know, at some point you have to give in to that, but right now, I think we should give each and every student, every parent, the right to decide whether or not they want to wear it, because it is infringing upon some of our students' ability to learn, to socialize, to feel comfortable at school across from K through twelve.
Greg.
Thank you. There's absolutely no circumstance which I would uh agree to a mask mandate on the children ever again. Uh, I was one of the biggest proponents of taking them off them as soon as possible. I saw the detrimental effects they had, both in learning and in emotional issues that they were causing. I also saw how COVID arcs would spike and then uh come back down again, irregardless of, uh, I hate that word, regardless of um mask being worn or not. Uh, ultimately, it's like the the south side of the lake in the winter, like, they put up that nice orange fence, but the snow always blows through it and onto Church Street. Well, you know, the reality was COVID would blow through a mask that was worn by a child at school the same way it would by a kid not wearing a mask. So, they were useless, in my opinion. Uh, I think that there's not a single circumstance where I'd ever vote for them. Uh, and the detriments and harms caused to the children were far too long, and I didn't like that the school committee tried to string it out an extra two, three weeks.
Eileen.
Um, barring any uh, you know, statewide mask mandate or from the Department of Education, I I don't really foresee why I would ever vote for masks um to come back into effect. Um, obviously, if the Department of Education or the state of Massachusetts decides, you know, come the fall, winter, that we need to uh wear masks again, obviously, I would support that. Um, but yeah, I I really don't see uh that coming back, um, or any other reason why it would have to come back. Um, but, you know, I do support the families in town who are still wearing their masks, um, and I think kids in our community are totally supportive of that. I love seeing the smiling, beautiful faces that are coming out of our schools. Um, but then I see some kids with masks too, and that's okay. Um, everyone's doing what is comfortable for them right now, and um, and obviously, that is something I support.
Thank you. Kevin.
Um, yeah, as someone who's been teaching and enforcing mask mandates, um, you know, for the last two years, um, I am glad they are gone now. It it definitely makes selfishly the the job, my job easier in terms of, I mean, in in terms of a hypothetical situation where I would support a mask mandate being put back in schools, I I'd love to say never. I think we've been saying never multiple times during this pandemic. I I mean, so I would say I would not support putting a universal mask mandate without um DSE, short of a massive hospitalization spike randomly that just hit Melrose, Wakefield, it didn't hit the rest of Massachusetts, but seeing that that's pretty unlikely, I I I couldn't, I couldn't really see myself um, you know, seeing us being in that position. Um, so, um, so, yeah.
Okay, um, this is gonna be the last question. Bob to Tom, everybody one minute on this question, okay? All right.
In in your opinion, Tom, and everybody else, are we are we starting to get back to normal in the classroom after the uh, as the pandemic subsides?
Oh, yes, we are. Um, I think there's an element that we've been talking about for uh over a year called, you know, what the the new normal might be, and I think we are still refining and adjusting that. But I think that's really since September of this year, really, we're now uh five months plus into the school year. I think we have landed um very nicely on on that place. It wasn't without frustration, it wasn't without some anxiety, it wasn't without um a level of cooperation and 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 collaboration with with teachers and with uh and with and with staff to make sure that that it was something that would work uh for kids and work for staff. Um, but I think I think we are. I think there are still, there are going to be elements um of the pandemic that um that I think are gonna, we're gonna see some benefit from. One might be the the introduction of the universal use of Zoom and those type of technologies. That's a, that's a good thing. That made lots of things efficient. I don't mean teaching and learning, I mean the rest, the rest of the world.
Okay. Carmen.
Yeah, I mean,
One minute.
It's a very unprecedented unprecedented thing that happened, and I think, you know, we we are making progress, but the reality is, there's always gonna be setbacks after something like that happens. Um, you know, just to touch on what Tom said, I mean, for the past several, I mean, a few years, we've, it's been all negative, it's been all bad. I think we can, as crazy as it sounds, we can start to, you know, view our progression from that in a positive light. Like you said, you know, the Zoom coming into the picture and, you know, you know, gaining knowledge of that. How about, you know, people now being aware of, you know, medicinal things, people being aware of just keeping themselves more physically and mentally healthy so that we can be prepared for another pandemic, we can, we can be prepared for another, for something else like this. And especially for the teachers and for the administration, for the town as a whole, I think, you know, we gained a lot of experience as a community, fighting together, working together, the school committee, working through everything. And obviously, we never want a pandemic. That's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying I'm happy it happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg?
Thank you. While we're back to business as usual in the classrooms, I think the return to normal isn't where we were before all this started because there's such an impact on learning loss for the younger children and such, I've found an emotional impact that it's had on the older children. We're going to be wrestling with this for years to come. And I think it's just on a daily basis that we address it and we continue to put our focus on repairing those losses as part of our new normal.
Thank you. Eileen?
While I think we are definitely on the right track, we, there was definitely some loss over the past couple of years, not just in the classroom and academically, but social and emotionally as well. Some of our kids are really suffering and like I'm going to point out that youth risk behavior assessment again. And it's clear from that and from the results of that. And so, you know, the school adding in two more adjustment counselors, I believe, at the high school, or one at the high school and one at the Galvin, that is definitely going to help alleviate and add some more resources into our schools. So, I definitely think we're on the right track. We've got some ways to go. This was a tough couple of years, but we made it together.
Kevin?
A short answer, yes, I think we are back to normal now in the classroom. But Greg and Eileen are absolutely right. There had, there has been significant learning loss, there has been significant emotional damage that has been caused. And we are, April vacation is going to be over, and we're going to be in May, and the summer's coming. We, I think the school committee has to really plan the summer to hit the ground running next September to address these losses. We can't just pretend this didn't happen. We really have to be, like, so if we're back to normal now, we really have to make sure when we hit the ground running in September, that we have to have things put in place to help accelerate our way out of this loss that we have faced with the pandemic.
Thank you. Alex?
After a traumatic event, you're never the same. And I don't think our classrooms will ever be the same as they were prior to the pandemic. We have all lived through so much these past two years that we need to create our identity again. We need to decide and critically look at where we are now and start from there. Not go back two years and look at where we were academically or socially, emotionally, but look at where we are now. Look at where the staff is now, the families are now, in the community, and move forward from there. I mean, I agree with Kevin, we can't act like it didn't happen. And we just have to keep going forward, whatever means necessary to ensure that at the end of all of this, we're all okay.
What we're going to do is, for the closings, because Amy Walls is videotaped, and to help the folks at CAT, we're going to let her go first, okay? And then I thought what we'd do is, we'd go in the same order that we asked the questions. Is that, you know, we'll do that instead of alphabetical, that will, I won't be able to comprehend that. Okay, so we're going to start with that, and then you're going to have two minutes closing, and I'll introduce you for your start, okay? So, in the control room, we ready to go with Amy Wall?
Hi, I'm Amy Wall, and I'm running for reelection for our school committee. Thank you to WCAT for hosting this event tonight. I apologize that I can't be there in person. Education is very important to me, and I'm continuing my own education and will be in class tonight during the debate. I remain committed to listening to parents and teachers as both play an integral part of our students' success. Without the strong commitment that our teachers display day in and day out, our students won't be able to thrive academically or emotionally. I will continue to be a voice and question the status quo. I will continue to advocate for mental health services for all of our students. I hope over the past year that I have made you not only proud, but have made you pay closer attention. We need strong voices, and I hope that I can be that voice for you again. I'm asking for your support and your vote on April 26th. Please feel free to reach out to me with any questions. I look forward to speaking with as many people as I can. Thank you again, and have a great night.
Eileen?
I want to thank Bill, Mark, and Bob and Wakefield Community Access TV for putting this forum together. I want to close with a few important notes about myself and my campaign. As a former teacher and now a parent of children in Wakefield Public Schools, I know the issues that face our families, students, teachers, and community. I have had many conversations with parents, community members, and educators on the issues that are important to them over the past few weeks. If I am elected, I will ensure that our students get back onto previous benchmarks in order to compete against neighboring communities, as well as provide schools with enough support for special education and the social, emotional health of all students. I will make sure that all parents, all students in our community are represented and protected, all of them. I can, I am committed to ensuring that policies and procedures are updated to reflect the best practices in today's world. The policy subcommittee, again, is one that I am definitely interested in if I am elected into school, onto school committee. And I hope that I would make some positive change there and to represent the parents of Wakefield, I mean, the students of Wakefield. Our students deserve the best resources and need to stay current with technology to be prepared to enter college and beyond, and a new high school is essential. And I promise to maintain the progress toward that state-of-the-art high school. If I'm elected to the school committee, I will be a dedicated member of the team, working to address the concerns of the community. I will attend meetings prepared, ask tough questions, and will not shy away from disagreement. I will engage with you to understand your point of view and represent you to the best of my ability. I will lead with empathy, compassion, and understanding.
Thank you. Kevin?
I believe that my background and experience as an educator for the past 23 years will help our school committee, if I am deserving enough to be elected, navigate the environment that we are now facing. We cannot put our head in the sand and ignore the learning loss and the emotional damage that the pandemic and the related school closures have brought upon our students. But I can't emphasize this enough, we also cannot get lost in a wave of negativity that hurts our ability to unite around the one thing that we all care about and we all have in common, which is the welfare of our students. I am passionate about education. About the pride that students exhibit when they master new skills, about the magical aha teaching moment when both teacher and student realize that something has been learned. These moments are why I am a lifelong educator and why I want to help our building administrators, our dedicated staff in Wakefield improve upon the instructional quality in our public schools. I promise you that I will work with everyone on the committee and collaborate with everyone on the committee to oversee a system that doesn't just maintain, but accelerate our students' learning trajectories so we can overcome the deficits that we have faced so far. Now, again, I'm not going to lie, this is going to be challenging, but this is an inspiring challenge. And I can't wait to be working with our superintendent and our staff to accomplish this. And my final point is, you know, communication is so important between the school committee and the citizens that elect us. And I hope to build a sense of trust between our citizens and the school committee because trust that we're all in this together, that's what's going to be necessary for us to work together to achieve our goal in accelerating our way toward our key school system. Thank you very much for the time and opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Alex?
All right. I'd first like to thank WCAT for hosting this debate tonight, everyone throughout our community who has supported me through this election, my friends and my family. If elected, I look forward to working to ensure that current policies are enforced, that they are looked at and amended if necessary, and creating new policies that reflect the current climate in social and economical society at the time. Working to ensure that our budget funds are allocated that reflect the needs of our students, our staff, and our district. Special education is an area that is near and dear to my heart, that I would love to work with to ensure that we have the staffing and the resources so that all students have what they need to be able to access our general curriculum. I think it's important that they are successful both inside and outside the classroom and socially, emotionally. I have the education, the background, the knowledge, and the skill set to serve on our school committee effectively and efficiently. I bring a wide and unique range of skills to the table, but more importantly, I have the want and the desire to do this. I have three young sons in the school system that they got to make it through, and I want them to have the best of the best. At the end of the day, I want what everybody in our community wants, to provide our children with the best education possible. It's our children, our school, and our voice. And I would love to be that voice for all of you. So, I humbly ask for your vote on April 26th, and I look forward to seeing you all at the polls.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you. I would also like to thank WCAT and Bill, Bob, and Mark for your, for your contributions tonight, to making this forum so valuable, and obviously, to my fellow candidates for bringing, bringing this to life. I've chosen to run for reelection to the school committee as I am keenly focused on the future of our schools and, more importantly, the increasing quality of education offered and demanded for our children and its impact on the quality of life of our town. In my time on the school committee, I believe I've worked hard at providing dedicated, experienced, common sense, leadership to the decision-making process. I believe I can continue to make a difference and ask each of you to join me in doing so. With so much at stake for our children, experience matters and effectiveness matters. The complexity of the school committee work requires a depth of knowledge and array of skills that I have honed over the years. I have five priorities to share during this campaign and pledge to bring each to the forefront if reelected. One, the construction of a new high school. Two, the ensuring post-pandemic recovery for all students, especially in academic interventions. Three, the reorganizing and rightsizing of the special education staffing and services. Four, the settling of competitive, fair, and affordable collective bargaining agreements. And five, building stronger partner relationship with teachers and staff. If reelected, I will continue to work hard to support and to lead these, each of these efforts. As a son and grandson of teachers and a grandson and nephew of police officers, I was raised in a home that values education, justice, and trustworthiness. I learned at a young age that hard work and honest effort, respect for others will serve us well in life. I've tried hard to bring this work ethic to my professional and civic work, and if reelected, will continue to strive to serve the best interests of students and families, teachers and staff, citizens and taxpayers of the town of Wakefield. I respectfully ask your consideration in casting one of your three votes on the ballot for next Tuesday, Tuesday, April 26th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carmen?
Yeah, I also want to thank the WCAT and the moderators for being here tonight for allowing this to be possible. I have no outline. I have no fancy words. I don't have the experience. I may not have the education, you know, required to be on the school committee. But the bottom line is this, what I do have is I have hunger, I have passion, and I have empathy for the parents and the students of this town. The reality is this, our general public, the parents, the parents who make our schools possible, who make our communities possible, they have been undermined, they have been ignored. And for those who feel their voices have been ignored, those who feel they have been overlooked, I'm here to fight for you. I'm not here to, I'm not here to be fancy. I'm not here for my own personal gain. I'm here to create an environment that all teachers, that all staff, that all students can go to bed at night and look forward to going to and being a part of the next morning. And that's, that's exactly what I will be for this community. I will fight for each and every one of you. I will listen to every voice, and I will commit to, I will commit to the public good. Again, I humbly ask for your vote on April 26th, next Tuesday. Thank you.
Greg?
Thanks, everyone. On April 26th, we, the parents and people of Wakefield, have an opportunity to help shape the next three years of our children's experience in the Wakefield Public Schools. We need to elect committee members with a strong moral compass, common sense, and conviction. Members who have the resolve to abstain from using the power that comes with the position when the call for action is no call at all. One of the key responsibilities of the school committee is to manage the school's department's budget. The biggest portion of the budget is salaries. When it comes time to negotiate contract, contracts for ISPs and for the full-time teachers, I assure you that my experience in business with the union workforce will aid in creating fair contracts for teachers with fiscally responsible measures taken for the taxpayers. I do not come to you with an agenda. I come to you with a servant's heart from a home where we instill love of God and love of neighbor. At home, I promote ways of living that are in line with Wakefield Public Schools' core values, and that is evidenced by the recognition my children have received from the Wakefield Public Schools. My two oldest daughters have been recipients of the Galvin Four Star General Award. My youngest daughter was honored at the Wakefield Education, Educational Foundation's Celebration of Learning last week. And my second-grade son has received multiple certificates in recognition of his kindness towards his peers. If the results of the ideas I shape and teach at home are honored by the Wakefield Public Schools, then I trust more of the same will follow in the student body if I am elected to the school committee. Please use one of your three votes to elect me to the Wakefield School Committee on April 26th, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank WCAT again. They do a, you know, great job here. This was a really well-organized and professional debate, or forum, shall we say. I'd like to thank Bob and Mark for their questions. They're incisive and, and, you know, sort of opened up the discussion. And I'd like to thank all the candidates for participating and, more importantly, for throwing your hat in the ring, as it were, and running for school committee. Not an easy job. And so, it's up to you, the voters, now, to make sure you get out on April 26th. You know, unless you vote, you're waiving your right and your responsibility to have an impact on the issues that were discussed here this evening. We will be, we will be having the, the election night show here on CAT. I have to read these off. The governmental channel, Comcast 22, Verizon 42, and RCN 131, on the WCAT Facebook channel, or by clicking on the "Watch Now" button on WCAT's website. I'd invite all the candidates, win, lose, or draw, to come down and participate in the forum. It's always great. And the old, I know years, years passed, we'd have some people lose a close debate, and they'd come down. It's great to share the experience itself, the people you met, and the issues that you discussed, like I say, whether you win or prevail. So, I invite all of you to show up that evening. And it's a lot of fun, too. Also, I just want to give a little shout out to Town Meeting, May 16th. Again, it's your responsibility as a citizen to show up. It is the greatest form of democracy in the world. One man, one vote, one woman, one vote. Okay, we're going to have a break now before we do the Town Council debate. The debate will be on a different link. I have no idea what that means. I'm a Luddite, but I'm supposed to tell you that. Oh, now I found it's going to be the same one. I do have the earpiece, that works. Okay, so once again, thanks to WCAT and thanks to you guys. This was really great. Again, vote. Thank you, and good night.